Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for November 5th, 2025. If you're interested in joining our study session or our weekly tournaments, send us an email to midatlanticvg@gmail.com. We are picking up our match with the white checkers ahead 4-0 in an 11-point match. And the red team will now have a 4-1 to play. And I've already got the Slido set up for what are the, I would sort of consider the two reasonable-looking moves at this score, sorry, for this opening roll. And if you'd like to vote, you can go ahead and do that. It's open and ready for your votes. So this is, this is everybody on the red team except for me and Eric and Rick. I don't know if we have a critical mass yet. Okay, we got, got a vote in now. That's good. Sometimes it takes us a little while to get ramped up in the early going while we're waiting for people to come in. Okay, we've got three votes. I think we're gonna roll with it. Split the checkers from the back. The only reason I would consider slotting is because, you know, way behind in the match, but this is a pretty, it's a reasonable play. Okay, so let's do that. And the white team now has a 3-2 to play. So this is me and Rick and Eric.
You consider 24-21, 13-11?
Sure. This has the downside of, you know, red's got their checkers in a good place. Their builder on the nine point is ideally placed, so they have a lot of point-making rolls. 5-2, 4-2, 5-4, double twos, double fours.
On the other hand, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Well, we, we don't want to do two down as much as usual because their back checkers are split, so they have more numbers to kill our back checkers as well. Sorry, there's a two down as well.
I was actually thinking though, if they had done one-three, I definitely wouldn't want to bring two down. With one-two, bringing two down is actually somewhat appealing. That's the other thing I've been thinking about because there's a little duplication in it. The 11 already gives them a nine to hit, so the nine by bringing the 13 to the 10 is already, they already have.
Yeah, so there, there's a
Really only adds the eight.
Small bit of duplication. Their 5-4 will make the four point and also hit us. You could also say a 6-3, you know, makes their three point but also hits that outfield checker. So there's a, there's a small bit of duplication.
I don't see the duplication. Can I explain again, please?
Okay, so if we make this play and red rolls 5-4 next roll, 5-4 does, they have to make a choice between are they gonna point on us on the four point or hit in the outfield?
Oh, yeah, I see.
So that's, that's the duplication. Essentially, it's saying that there's not as many hitting numbers as you might think from first glance.
Okay, I thought it was with the two-down play, but the duplication happened here with the split play.
Eric, I think there is duplication on the two-down play also because now the nine has yet another use for them. The one to 10, the two to 11 were making one of their inner board points on a nine. So we're really not giving them too much additional. We're giving them an eight that they didn't have, but we're taking away all the other hits on the 21. So I think this is the safer of the plays. I'm not sure if it's better, but I think it's safer.
Okay.
I had trouble following all those numbers in quick succession. Sorry, but yeah, I'm still confused.
Okay, then Eric, what play would you like to make?
The, the double two-down play.
Two down. And Rick, what do you, what's your play?
Um, I'm okay with the two-down.
Okay. Actually, don't know what the right play is here off the top of my head, but uh, let's give it a whirl. Hmm, two down, not as good as we, as we might have thought.
Look, the
Oh, the small split.
Yeah, it's slightly better supposedly. Yeah.
Yeah.
Interesting. We didn't even consider that.
I, I dislike the small split in general. Okay, six and two?
Come on, guys. This is not so hard.
Well, they do have a choice.
I think there is a choice. Okay, so I think the choice is making the seven point.
Yeah.
And or hitting in the outfield, right? 23-15. So I, I put both of those in the Slido. Okay, here come the votes. Okay, it's tied, two, two each. Anybody in here hasn't voted? We need to, we need to break the tie. Oh, there's the fifth vote has come in. Okay, 13, 13-7. Oh, wait, it's changed now. Somebody changed their vote to this. All right, I think we're gonna go with that. And I think this is right. Uh, it removes a builder, gains in the race. The checker on the nine point is still well-placed as a builder. I'm, I'm gonna guess that this is actually right by quite a bit. Okay, so that's where the vote went and let's take a peek. And yes, making the bar point is a whopper.
Yeah.
Doesn't gain enough, um, you know, it's got, it's got good priming, you know, but you wanna gain in the race and take away a builder. Hitting does two good things. All right, now for the white team. Okay, I know what I want.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Eric, that's what you want too, right?
Of course, yes.
Great. Easy play, and I think that it's, it's not close. Triple whopper to do anything else. All right.
Have to come in on the two.
I'm gonna say this plays itself, right? Yeah.
And 23 to 15 with the six to make a
That's, you're too far away. That's eight pips away.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Whoops, sorry about that.
I was thinking, the other, I'm sorry, I'm disturbing, so I can say it later, it's okay.
Go ahead.
No, 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 no. I'll say it on our turn on White's turn. Discuss away, please.
I'm rough, having a rough time with this one, other than that.
15-9.
Yeah, 15-9.
Get it.
Hits a checker, puts a builder back into a good spot.
Yep.
Um, actually, I can't, I can't imagine that anything else will be even close, so I think we should just do this. Uh, let's go back and take a look. Yeah. Anything else is almost a quadruple whopper. There's just no other productive play. Eric, what were you gonna say?
So I was thinking the other day, there's this saying like, when in doubt, making the five, make the five point because if it's wrong, it's not wrong by much. But I think there's a kind of play that's, I think, even more often right than making the five point, which is hitting in the outfield with their back checkers. It's almost never wrong as far as I can, as I remember.
Yeah, I think that's true. Okay, now we're on the bar. All right, four and one. That's not much fun. You see, if we come in here, what's the four? I don't know. I don't think this is a fun place to enter.
No, stacking three on the, the 24 is rarely right.
It's almost
If you have another option.
Especially because we have no four that's calling for it to be done.
Yeah.
I, I think coming on the five only because I don't see anything else to do with the one either.
Okay, I wanna throw this play out, the, the double split. I don't know that it's right.
I, I don't usually see, think of doing that.
Um, is that, is that because you're smarter than me and you don't want to spread your checkers out and get attacked? Or are you just not creative enough?
Let's go with I'm not creative enough, but it, but in this case, considering you said you have to play carefully when you're ahead, that doesn't strike me as a particularly careful play.
Okay, but um, yeah, you mean we're ahead in the, in the match.
In the match.
We are behind in development in this game.
That's true.
And so that
But we are ahead in the pip count. We are ahead in the race, so we were, we are prompted to play safe when we're ahead in the race.
We're the, we're the white team. We're behind.
Oh, I forgot. Yeah, yeah. I, I, as, as usual, like when you, you're the bottom player when you're
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so I feel like we're in agreement that we're gonna come in here and then we have to decide on the, the one, right? So Rick wants to come up to the 20 point. I, I think Rick's theory is if we don't get hit on that point, then we have a chance to make the good anchor. Is that right? That we're thinking, Rick?
We have a chance to make the good anchor. We're preserving an anchor in the meantime. And we have more threat on them. We force his action, which I think we wanna do.
Okay, um, seems like a reasonable argument. Uh, Eric?
Yeah, that was my first instinct as well.
Okay, all right, then I think that's our play. And
Let's see if the other was right.
Oh. How much smug equity do I get?
Interesting.
Forty-three millipoints of smug equity, right?
Yeah, I suppose because the, the split on the 23 isn't directly threatened by the 16 extra blot there. It's less dangerous than it would be if it were, we were in direct range. So, yeah, makes sense.
Okay, 6-2 for the red team. I do think there are a couple of interesting options here. This one we will put to a vote. If you have a candidate play, you can put it in the chat.
13-7, 9-7?
13-7, 9-7, sounds good.
That would have been my move.
Oh, that's, that's Amy. Hello, Amy.
Hello.
Okay, and I think there's another play that is at least worth considering. I don't, I don't know that it's the right play, but I think it's worth considering. What's the other play that I think should be considered?
13-5.
Yeah, hitting loose on the five point.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I've opened the Slido. Both of those are in there now. You know, you gotta consider 13-5. It's fighting for a good point.
Yeah. I don't see much wrong with it, you know. Now you got me thinking which one is right, but I think
I think I know which one is right. Oh, most of the votes are for, it's changed up here. It's three to two in favor of this play here. All right, that looks like, that looks like the play that we'll make. And I think this one is right. That's a good blocking point. Hitting on the five is a little bit too loose. It's, it's a good idea, but oh, at this point, the vote is tied, but that was ahead, so, um, all the votes are rigged anyway, so.
Do you think if red was behind in the race, then hitting on the five would be correct?
Yeah, hitting on the five is more attractive when you're behind in the race. You, you need to do something a little bit more. But here after this play, red has an 18 pip lead. You don't really wanna give that up. So, so this was the play that Amy suggested. I'm, I feel sure this is right.
Make it, starting to make the structure when we have three back can't be bad.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, see, hitting on the five, it's nice. Hitting on the five point is nice. It's just a little too loose and you don't really need to do that. Got, got that nice race lead. This is good, this is good structure for red. Um, it's, uh, you know, our checkers are stuck back here on the ace point. Um, so it's, it's the start of a prime. Now there's 10 checkers in the zone. Okay, double twos, all right. I bet we could do something good with this.
Right off the bat, I'm thinking 24-20 and make the four, but
Yeah. So Rick, let's, let's suppose that you were only allowed to play two of them. What's more important? This or this?
Interesting. Um, I'm gonna guess the four, but I, without conviction.
Uh-huh. I'm going the other way. I'm saying this is gonna be more important, that defensive anchor. Um, okay, so one of the things that this does is it makes this big stack of checkers on white six point a little bit less valuable. They're, uh, they are gonna have a harder time deploying those in a useful way. How can they be deployed now? They can be used to make points behind the anchor. In general, you prefer not, or you wanna lean away from making points behind your opponent's high anchor. I'm not saying that making the four point wouldn't be useful for red, but it's a little bit less useful once that point is made.
Wait, we just used, uh, two twos. Don't we have another two?
Yeah, I was, I was, I was coming up with this hypothetical where if we only had two of them to play.
Well, okay, so, so there's no way to truly enact that hypothetical, but all, the closest would be if we got double ones. You would not advocate making the 20 point over making the five and then doing something else, would you? Like five and
Probably not, because yeah, I, I only need two of those to make the five point. But, um, I certainly feel a, a strong need to make that defensive anchor. They do have 10 in the zone, right? So 10 in the zone means you, you gotta be a little bit nervous. All right, well, this is my play too. This is what Rick was saying. Eric, you're good with this?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you know, if we look at the plays, okay, so here's how you can sort of see it, you know, um, the top three plays all involve making the 20 point. And then you have to go down to the fourth play before you see something that makes the four point without making the 20. You know, that, we, we could test this if we really wanted to, but maybe I'm not super interested in that. Okay, carry on. Okay, four and one for red. That's not, that can't be easy.
Would we wanna move 24 to 20 with the four?
Okay, maybe. And how about with your one, what would you like?
Nothing that's real functional.
Yeah, no, nothing that thrills you, right?
Jason?
Yep.
How about if we went, uh, 13 to 9 and 24 to 23?
All right.
We could do that. That's a hard anchor to get out of.
Okay, yeah, Brenda points out, that's a tough anchor to get out of, right? That when you make that 23-point anchor, you're kind of committing yourself to something.
Right, but I'm try, I'm trying to get you to break your, your five, or your 20 point, my five point.
Uh-huh, yeah.
See if I can entice you to come out.
All right, now, here's a question that you should be asking yourself. How urgent is it that you acquire an, a defensive anchor right now?
Right now, not that imperative.
Yeah, I think it's not that imperative for, I, I got a couple of reasons. One is you're ahead in the race, so when you anchor, that means it's a little bit harder to get off the anchor. You, you're limiting your, your choices. Uh, I think the other reason is white has nine checkers in the zone and is not threatening, uh, very much. White still has three checkers back. It's a little bit harder to attack when you have three checkers back.
So then, so then the option would be 24 to 20 with an eight to seven?
Okay, I put, yeah, I've got that in there, uh, as one of the choices. Here, let's, let's take a look at these. So here's 24-20, 23-22. Okay, then there's 24-20, 8-7. Okay, then there's 13-9 and then button up. Here's a play. I, I wanna add one more, which is I want to throw in 13 to 8. I don't know that it's a great play, but
Actually, I think that might be the best play, 13 to 8.
Who knows? I don't know.
So
What about six to one?
All right, let's put that in there. Okay, so one reason that you make a play like that, six to one, is a, as a tempo play, right? You're afraid that your opponent is about to do something, so it's kind of a quick counterpunch. You, you throw them off just a little bit so that they can't make a point, or at least, you know, they, it's harder for them. So right now, white has some point-making numbers, right? 6-1, 3-1, 6-3. If you hit on the ace point, then it removes, uh, all those point-making numbers.
It's also got 4-1.
4-1, yeah, right, good. 4-1 is a, is a good point-making number. That's, that's the usual reason why you would want to, um, hit loose like that. Now, the, the, one of the problems with hitting loose, of course, is that you're outboarded, right? White has a, has a better inner board structure, uh, and has an anchor, so the loose hit will, will probably not accomplish, um, winning gamins, for instance. Now, sometimes that loose hit is right, but I'm not sure here. Oh, let's look at the vote. Oh, the votes are almost all for
Mike asked in the chat, what about 23 to 18?
23 to 18, okay, go ahead, Eric.
Gives the, uh, white more numbers to hit. I think it doesn't duplicate much, like, it increases the good numbers for white. I have feeling that
Yeah, let's, let's look at that. So now you're giving, uh, ones, fours and sixes to hit.
But also, you also have fives, or if you wanna hit loose on the 24. So four numbers that hit. And then if we don't go to the 18, then, uh, then I think, uh, we have threes, sixes, threes and ones, uh, to hit. But, uh, yeah, and that's it. So you have one less number to hit, I think, if we don't go to the 18. White has one last number.
All right, so most of the votes are for this play. Step up a little bit. 15 pip lead. I could see this.
So what are the arguments again for 23 to 22, to 22 instead of eight to seven? If, if there are any.
All right, uh, there's, okay, there are some. There's a little bit of duplication. Duplicating of white's threes.
Yes, that's fine. Yeah, that's true.
That, that, that's one reason. Uh, also, if, okay, here's another reason. Let's say white rolls a very good number and points on the five point. You'd rather have your blot up higher so that when you come in and anchor, you've got a slightly better
Ah, yeah, true.
That's, that's, you know, some, some of these are mitigated by other reasons, but I, so the reasons I'm giving you might not be enough, but they are, they are definitely reasons. Okay, this looks like it has won the vote. Let's do that. Wow, 23-18. I'm not smart enough to make a play like that. Yeah, well, that's my answer too, wow. And six to one came out in second place. That surprises me a little bit. Okay, none, none of these are bad, right? I mean, 33 millipoints, that's a medium-sized error, but it's not, uh, it's not a huge mistake. Okay, here we go for the white team. I, I don't, we're not gonna cube for two reasons. We got a big lead in the match, 4-0. Once you get a four-point lead in a match, that's when you start to, you know, uh, you get a little chicken with the cube and we're behind in the race. We might have a better board, but we're nowhere near a cube. I think it would be a huge mistake right now for us to send the cube.
You forgot to grant Mike his 33-millipoints of smug.
Oh, does he want smug equity on that? Uh, Mike, just put it on, put it on my tab. I owe Mike so much smug equity. It's, it's not funny. The, the interest is rolling. All right. Five and two. Come on, we gotta do better than that. I'm somewhat tempted to hit.
I was looking at, at exactly that.
How?
I don't see anything else productive.
Yeah.
We have a stronger board, so why not? And we are behind in the race, so why not?
Yeah, we are behind in the race. Okay, is there any other way that this could get played? Like, uh, would you consider two down?
I don't like a big, big point.
Yeah. It's ea, okay, it is easier to break your midpoint when you hold an advanced anchor. There is that. But how much do we gain out of this? I'm not sure we're gaining very much. Okay, now let's say, let's say we hit here. What about the two? I mean, I suggested this, but, um, I'm not convinced that that's right. There could be, could be this.
Yeah, um, either one is good because the stepping up makes it easier for us to cover our three later. So, yeah, that one makes it easier to cover, so, but also
That's why I tend to make plays like this. Sometimes I'm wrong about, you know, getting closer like that.
Yeah, so that's probably better, but, uh, 13 to 11 doesn't feel wrong either, so it's probably gonna be close.
Okay. All right, so I think I'm gonna go for this play, but if, if you guys wanted to make the 11 point, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that. Rick, what do you say?
Would be more in, I, I like this, but I would be more inclined to step up from the 24 and get a run than I would be to make the 11.
Oh, you would prefer this over making the 11?
Correct.
I see. Uh, but how do you
We all agree on first choice.
Which is hitting?
Yeah.
Okay, and then
We are behind in the race, so shouldn't we keep more contact by being behind on the 24?
Yeah, maybe. So Eric, do you like this play? 11-9?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Rick, what do you say?
Rick probably wants to do his 22, so that's fine.
No, no, I, I agree with this. I was just, um, saying second choice disagreement, not
Oh, you're, you're hedging your bets so that you can, you can potentially collect partial credit, right, on smug equity?
Okay, yeah.
Playing for the partial credit.
No, nobody ever gets anything right anymore. We live and die on partial credit. Okay, uh-oh. Oh, we just got lit up like a Christmas tree.
Uh-oh.
13-11, oh, and it's a whopper with cheese. This is what I'm talking about. I often get these wrong. I, I, I often think about, I just wanna step up and get a, a builder closer.
Yeah, but I suppose the, the checker on the, on the five given too many return shots.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay. Ooh. Yeah. Lot of choices.
Well, we come in on the five and lock in our, our anchor.
Okay.
We're gonna be ahead in the race after this roll, so don't we wanna race now?
Could be.
Yeah.
And what do we, what do we do with the fourth one? 13 to 8?
Oh, wait, I'm not red.
Are you talking about, you're talking about that, Adam?
Well, that's one idea, or another idea is we stay on the 20. And then you go, uh, 13 to 3, 8 to 3.
Like that? Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Those are two pretty reasonable plays.
But there's also, um, six to one twice.
Okay, and what's your, what's your fourth one?
I guess 13 to 8 would be the fourth one.
Okay, let me get that in there.
I personally like making the 20 anchor.
And, and not racing? You don't wanna race?
And then bringing a five down and taking two in to, to
To the three point, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't wanna go too deep to the one.
Okay, all right, I have all those plays in the Slido. You could, you can vote now.
Hmm, okay. Jason, is that, um,
It's just the running player there.
Bar 20, 13, 13 to, okay, never mind. I see how it, it is making a point, sorry. I'm good.
Great. All right, the votes are rolling in. So what, what's the pip count gonna be after? So after, the red team is gonna be up So what what's the pip count gonna be after? So after the red team is gonna be up twenty-five pips, that's a pretty sizable race lead. All right, s- six votes have been cast and most of them are for going to the three point, making the three point. Okay. Uh-huh.
Yeah.
So here's the one that goes, this is the one that I was thinking about, going to the fifteen point because of the race lead. But how about this, the making the ace point came out on top?
Sure do.
Gonna win, gonna win more gamins that way, and eventually you're gonna wanna turn the cube and hope to win a gammon. Those, these are hard plays to make. I think I would have made this second play.
Yeah.
I would have made the fifteen point. I think Eric, that's kinda what you were getting at. We were talking about a race lead, right?
Yeah. Yeah, when you're had twenty-five pips, you wanna race.
Yeah, you do wanna race.
I think contrary to what it says, the fact that the cube isn't turned. The race, the play that everyone's talking about is good for the race, it would be better than the top one. Um because it has the better win chance anyway. It it moves up, it gives you the better win chance. And you don't wanna really maximize your gammon chances at this point. You wanna maximize your win chances until the cube is turned.
I think there's some truth to that.
Even though the equity on the second choice is lower. That's the one XG has its little icon by, that means that's its choice.
Well, that's its choice at a lower evaluation level. But I've got this reevaluated everything with XG double plus. I I I think you should ignore that little icon. Okay, now we're, white team is up, five, four to play. I don't care for this roll, let's reroll. So you guys are as stumped as I am, huh? What about this?
I I had to answer someone and I didn't see what the word looks like, okay.
Um, I was thinking we might wanna hang back at the twenty-five pip differential. Thirteen, nine for the four, just maybe make it a little more difficult, and that forces six, one is the only five that's left.
Okay, what about this five?
Oh, I didn't see that. That that's an interesting play.
Yeah, I I think that's good and makes us uh bar stronger for long term.
It it makes our board stronger, it leaves us vulnerable to getting hit, which, you know.
Well, but it but it also gives us return shots cuz they're gonna have to break their anchor to hit.
Yeah, um, okay, is there any scenario where we'd want to break from the twenty point? You know, I don't know, something like this.
I mean. I don't know. Yeah, too many blocks maybe, even though we are behind, that's maybe too many blocks.
Okay, yeah, I I I tend to agree. Now, um, so I suggested this play, doesn't mean I think it's right. Um, I I am a little concerned about dumping a checker on the ace point, and you put these two blocks in the board. And they're in undesirable locations. I'm not excited about making the three point or the one point. That being said, the play that I suggested is making the three point, so how excited can I be about this?
Yeah, I think that's more balanced, yeah, I would have picked that one.
Uh yeah, I'm, I certainly don't feel confident about this. Okay, Rick, what do you, yeah, Rick, what's your play?
I wanna do the thirteen, nine, um. I'm not convinced on the eight, three, but I think you're probably right.
I'm not convinced about it at all. I I I think I would, that's the play I would make over the board, and I would, I would grit my teeth.
I was thinking the same thing for me with the six, one. I wouldn't like it, but that's what I would have done over the board.
I I won't be surprised when six to one comes out correct. And I don't know, may, you know, maybe it is, I I don't know. I I this won't surprise me at all if this is right. All right, Eric, what do you like?
Um. Um, making the three and and the nine.
All right. All right, let's find out if Rick.
Wait, 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 one second.
No.
Well, if you're gonna make the. Uh uh, never mind, I was thinking if you make the eight, three, you could do the eight, four, but you still have the, you're you're leaving a block either way, so.
Yeah, okay, all right. Twenty-four, twenty, nine, four. We're we're too frisky leaving that blot out there. We didn't even talk about this play. Well, we talked about it to the extent that we wanted to hang back. Uh thirteen, nine, six, one is a whopper. About that?
Yeah.
Okay, car- carrying on.
We great, I anticipated the roll.
Yeah.
I missed, I I missed the result, sorry. Uh was our, was that making the three and the nine correct?
No.
Oh, slightly incorrect, okay. Oh, coming up to the twenty, I didn't expect that.
Okay, four, one for the red team.
Can we get a reroll, please?
Uh, you didn't let us reroll.
Oh, I didn't know, I didn't know that was part of the deal.
Yeah, sorry.
All right. Thirteen, eight.
Play cancel gammon where you can get a.
Yeah, yeah, cancel gammon.
Once uh a game, you can get a reroll.
Thirteen, eight.
All right, I got that in there, Adam. Uh, I also put in six to one, the the loose hit on the ace point.
I don't like it, but.
Well, the main reason you don't like it cuz there's nothing here is really good, right?
Correct.
This is just like our role, you're you're picking from a, you know, a bad lot. Okay, all right, let's just talk about like what's good about six to one. I can think of two good things about it.
It keeps your anchor on the thirteen.
Yeah.
It or it keeps her, and um it's a timing play, and we've got an anchor on the twenty, so it's, even if you come in and hit. We may not be as that worse off.
And you might not be able to save your blood on the seventeen.
Okay, there is all of that. I also think that sometimes when you hit on the ace point, you know, that that. That ace point checker is the the goalie, right? Sometimes you hit that and you get it off the ace point, and we're forced to enter at a high point. And then you're, it's uh.
You're just a stack on the six point that's been sitting.
Yes, that's the other reason. It's it's unstacking the six point, um, which is always worth something. Okay, now what's good about thirteen to eight?
Nothing, that's not much.
Well, I can, I can think of some things.
It it only leaves one vulnerable checker.
Yeah.
If you don't hit it, um, we could bring it down later. It's also there, if you have to come out. Maybe you could use it to hit something with, I don't know.
It's leaving a block that if it gets hit, it costs white something to hit with, right? You might have to break the midpoint, might have to break in the the good anchor, so it's, there's no spare on the midpoint to hit with. It's a builder, it's a builder for the four point, right? Red would really like to make the four point. Once you've made the three point, you have some amount of urgency to make the four point.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay, all right, let's look at what the voting is. Almost everybody wants to hit on the ace. So, looks like that's gonna be the play. I think this is the play I would make to preserve uh, preserve that midpoint. Okay, let's see how we did. All right, for the first time in five rolls, we've gotten it right. Okay, good play, or at least, you know, this is the best of, again, not a great roll. Five and three, all right, well, no choice there. Oh, yuck.
Yeah.
Can we reroll this one?
Yes. You have my permission.
Thanks.
Six, three, I guess.
It's dumped the checker, can't do anything else, really.
There's no alternative.
You could go nine to six.
Too many blots, I think. I wa- I like the nine point as a blocking point, too. And it's hard for us to remake these points cuz we have no spares on the midpoint. I think I'm, I think I'd prefer this horribly ugly looking play. Rick, you're you're in for this?
Yes, but over the table, you have to act enthusiastic like you like it to just keep your opponents a little confused.
Yes, that's right.
True.
Eric?
Yes.
See, Eric has having a hard time showing enthusiasm for this play cuz. All right, let's do it. Uh, okay, it's right. It doesn't mean I have to like it, though. Okay. Should we put this up for a vote on a cube? Why am I, why am I asking?
Are you talking for about red?
Yeah.
Well, we have a seven in the zone.
Yes, and?
But we have a lot of holds.
Yeah. Got a race lead?
With you having our five point and our check, uh uh spare up top there, I don't think this is a double.
Not yet.
Okay, what about the match score?
We've got a lot of work to do.
The match score has to factor into your thinking, right?
We still have a lot of work to do, yeah.
Uh, I I guess the the way to evaluate is the market losers, so if you if you hit on the seventeen, which is the most obvious. Potential market loser, is it actually gonna be a market loser? Um, cuz we might as white come in on the one and then you lost your market loser.
I think the only market loser we would have would be a three si- a three, five.
Yeah, so that's not really enough. Eh e- even that, three, five, and then white enters, you probably still have a. Right, we have still take.
I'd rather have a double six or double five.
Ah, that's probably true, yeah, double six or double five, pretty good.
But would it be a market loser? You could, we could double after that. And I think we just wanna get, we wanna get on the board, don't we? I mean, I, that's my thought.
Well, I think, okay, if you roll double six or double five, that's a market loser, because then it's a, it's just an ordinary holding game cube. With a pretty huge race lead and the seven point made, that'd be, it'd be a double pass, but that's only two rolls.
Are we voting on doubling or not?
Yeah, it's open on the slider.
Got it.
Okay, nobody wants the cube, so.
I think dumping is smart. So I came in late, I just, um. Yeah, becau- because of the score, because of the score.
Okay, well, let's find out. The the consensus is no double, so let's roll. Okay, well. Okay, we'll check the, can I look at the, okay, I can't look at the cube right now, so we'll deal, we'll deal with the move first.
Boy, eight to two, eight to six. Very problematic six.
What about thirteen to seven and thirteen to eleven?
That's the other option. I think those are the two options. At this point, I think we wanna give up the twenty anchor.
Not yet.
I think there's another play worthy of consideration.
How about uh seven to one, six, four?
Okay, I wasn't thinking about that. I've put that in there. Bill Powell, you got a TV on, we can hear it.
We'll go thirteen to seven and six, four.
Yeah, that's the play I was, that's the other play I was thinking about. I don't know, I don't know that it's right, but.
I just wanted to get the thirteen out of those. Out of the twelves line, they were, we're gonna get hit.
Yeah, the the difference is, one difference is that on the thirteen point. Uh, on the eleven point, white can hit with a spare off the anchor, whereas that's not true on the midpoint.
That's true.
Uh, tha- that's kind of a small consideration, but it's it's worth thinking about.
Oh, there's more shots on the eleven, too.
There are more, are there more shots on the eleven? Go to the eleven, it's all sixes, four, two, five, one, that's fifteen shots. On the thirteen point, it's all ones, plus six, two, five, three, double fours. That's one extra shot number, so it's actually more shots on the thirteen point. Just by one, though. Okay, Slido's open, got quite a few different plays getting votes. Four different plays have gotten votes.
I'm I'm glad I'm not on the team that has to decide this play because.
Yeah, me too.
It's tough. These are really bad guys.
Yeah, neither side has been rolling very well here. Okay, we've got seven votes are in, and. There's a plurality for bringing the two checkers down, which I think is a reasonable looking play. Okay, I think that'll be the play. Okay, let's go back and look at the cube. Okay, no double, it's a whopper to cube. And then the checker play, seven, one, six to four.
Ooh. That was the play.
That was the play.
That makes sense.
Eric is right. I'm glad I didn't have to face this checker play.
Yeah, I would have ma- I would have made that play of this.
I suggested it and then didn't vote for it.
Yeah, well, I do that all the time. I'm suggesting plays, uh, you know. Okay, four and three. We got, we gotta start rolling better. Okay, what about just uh?
Yes, this one, uh, that's.
Like scared? I mean, it's either that, it's either that or this.
Well, yeah, the the only reason I don't like the twenty thirteen, I'm not even that concerned leaving the checker at the eight. Is it strips our anchor if we do get that, it makes it harder to take the shot if we get it the next time. So so I think the eight won for both purposes.
You know, we're not really that far behind in the race, right? After this play, we're fifteen behind. Yeah, that's that's something, but you know, we can get back into it. If we get hit, we're we're taking the, it's not great. So I I I like this, the the weenie play here, just dump it to the ace point. Well, I don't like it, but I think it's, I think it's better than the other one. Uh, Rick, yeah, it sounds like you're okay with this?
Yeah, yeah.
Eric?
Yeah.
All right. All right, I give up. I don't know anymore.
Oh.
Wow.
The other is a higher win percentage.
Yeah.
And I'll end the same gammon, okay, I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm confused too. Well, we're obviously confused. Okay, all right, no, if the other one wasn't a cube, then this one isn't either, because now there's no way to hit, so. We won't put that cube up to a vote. All right, six, four.
Seven to one. And eleven to seven.
Eleven to one.
Yeah, eleven to one.
You could do that.
Uh, is there any other play that's worth? I'm not sure there is any other play that's even worth looking at.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's just do this then. This is a good, this is a good play, right? It accomplishes something. It cleans up the blot, makes a point. Uh, all right, I'm sure this is right. Okay, yeah, nothing else is close. All right, come on, let's roll. Come on, let's roll better now.
Oops.
I don't know, I, I think I can live with this. It's better than some of this other junk we've been rolling.
Yeah, there's actually choices here.
Yeah, there are some choices. And I tell you, the, the first choice I think I wanna make is making the ace point.
The, well, the first thing I thought was make the ace and slide nine to eight. But I'm considering thirteen-eleven as an alternative to all that. Making it harder on the back checkers that they have.
Right. Um, it also turns double-sixes from a crushing game-winning roll into.
A liability.
A real liability. They'll, they'll bust up their, their forward position and leave a blot.
Sixes and fours both are now.
Also, if they roll six-four, it's not that pretty for them either.
Right.
Okay. Uh, now is that, are those? I, okay, I guess the other thing that it uh, it blocks is double-threes, right? It, it sort of blocks double-threes. They won't be able to run all the way out with the, with those checkers. Okay, now I don't really wanna make decisions on a single roll like double-six.
But I mean, it gives us um, more attacking uh, like, uh, checkers in direct. Range when they leave their anchor, if they have to leave the next turn.
Which they're gonna have to leave. At some point, pretty soon.
And we've got timing aplenty when we run one of our off the twenties, so I kinda like this, actually.
Okay, I, I kinda like this too. And also, we're gonna make this our last decision, because it's five minutes to the hour. I, I had lost track of time. Um, because backgammon is too fun, and I was just too focused on this. Okay, I think we'll make this play, and then we'll pick it up next week. Okay, let's see how we did. Yes. Uh, I love finishing on a high note. Fantastic. Good job. Me and Eric and Rick, well done. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap things up now. Thanks for joining the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for November fifth, twenty-twenty-five. If you're interested in joining our weekly study session or our tournaments, send us an email at midatlanticbg@gmail.com.